Hey everyone, good evening, good evening, good evening, good evening. How are you doing tonight? This is your one and only Facebook minister, Minister Eric Robinson Jr. Stepped on here tonight. Today is Monday, yeah, it's that time, it's time to have a Bible study session. And I pray you all had a well and blessed day. That it was full of blessings and opportunities and being able to be a blessing and change, be a blessing someone's life. But tonight, we're gonna come on here tonight, we're gonna have our own little Bible study session tonight. And this Bible study session that we're having tonight, let me invite some people to come in and listen in while I'm at it, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, so many people, so little time. But I'm not gonna spend all night writing people, so. Anyway, let's go ahead and get into it. Um, tonight's Bible study session is called, "Our Mistakes Will Make Us Great." As you probably read, as you came in saying, "Our mistakes will make us great." Subtopic, "Learn From Your Mistakes, Not Repeat Them." I'm gonna repeat that again. Our mistakes will make us great. Subtopic, "Learn From Our Mistakes, Not Repeat Them." And what comes to mind about that is pretty much, hey, God bless you. Thank you for listening. What comes down with the mind about that topic is pretty much, a lot of times we, we often sometimes don't pay attention or not, or we do pay attention, we don't care. We constantly making the same mistake over and over again. We repeat, we're going through this cycle of constantly making mistakes over and over again to a point that it may, it may take us getting in some deep trouble for us to learn, I need to learn, stop doing that. Hold on a second. So. So sometimes, some people learn their mistakes on their first try, some on the second, even the third. But there's times that we make mistakes intentionally and make the mistake accidentally. Accidentally is in a way of, oh, I didn't know that was wrong. Please do forgive me, I'm not gonna make that mistake again. And there's the intentional mistake, meaning I know it's wrong, or I'm doing it intentionally just to make somebody mad. I'm doing it intentionally just because I know it's wrong, but it feels so good to my flesh. So tonight, we're gonna be going into some scriptures and some stories and scenarios, dealing with how we not only identify our mistakes, but also how we can learn not to repeat our mistakes again down the line. But in order for us to prevent ourselves from learning, from making the same mistakes, sometimes we gotta identify when there's a mistake is made. So tonight, we're going to go into some scriptures to help us along the way, cuz people in the Bible made mistakes along the way and they still became great people. Peter, Moses, a lot of people, I can go down the line. People make mistakes and mistakes and they walk with God, but guess what? It is something for continuing to strive towards perfection. So before we go into this Bible study session, let's go before the throne of grace, let's get some prayer in before we really get started. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together. Thank you for another day. Thank you for your grace and mercy. Thank you for watching us over the highways and byways. And thank you for watching over our work and wherever we need to go. Thank you for health, life, and strength, Lord. Heavenly Father, as we go into this message tonight, decrease me so you may increase. Let you get the glory, the honor, and the praise out of this tonight, heavenly Father, and not me. Remove my spirit in my, remove my spirit in my will and insert your spirit in your will, Lord. Let your will be done in this message tonight, heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus. Have your way, let your children get something out of it. Let it be my voice, but your words, God, not my words, that you have reigning in this message, that you have reigning tonight and every night and everything that we do, that we acknowledge you and praise you and give you the glory and the honor that's due unto you. In Jesus' name, amen. So tonight, this is the part of my Bible study session that I tell everybody to get their Bibles out, take some notes, ask some questions, and let's get into this. Cuz trust me, all the stuff that I'm talking about, I'm gonna say, I'm always gonna give scriptures to everything that's being talked about. Even if I just give one, the point's still gonna come across, cuz I'm giving you not just one scripture, I'm giving you multiple scriptures to go along with the message in order for you to know that, oh, he's not lying. It is in the Bible. I'm giving you stuff to back up, to back up. And that's what a lot of people say, that, that's what that scripture, I always say this, that's what that 2 Timothy 2:15 says, "Study to show thyself approval to God; or work in not ashamed, but write in the writing the word of truth." That means getting in the word and finding out for yourself and not going by what somebody preaching teaches you all the time and you run with it without studying to find out and get an understanding of the scriptures for ourselves. Cuz it may come out differently to us, but the word of God will all, everything will always line up with the word of God. Even if people who don't wanna believe in the Bible, everything's going in line up with God's will, and that's the word of God. So the first scripture I'm gonna go into tonight is coming out of Genesis, chapter 4, verse 6. It's Genesis, chapter 4, verse 6, and I don't mind if not that many people won't watch. But end of the day, some people don't wanna be accountable and responsible for everything they hear and know, especially when it's coming out the word of God. But I enjoy what I do. So y'all on here, please share it, invite some friends to listen in. Genesis, chapter 4, verse 16 and 7, it says, "And the Lord saith unto Cain, 'Why art thou wolf? And why is thy contentious fallen? If thou dost well, thou shalt not be accepted; and if thou dost not well, send life at the door; and unto thee shall his desire, and thou shalt rule over him.'" And that's coming out of, that part is coming out of the the story about talking about Cain and Abel. How do you react when someone suggests that you have done something wrong? Do you move to correct? Do you move to correct the mistake or deny that you need to, need to? After Cain's sacrifice was rejected, God gave him a chance to right his wrong and try again. God even encouraged him to do this, but Cain refused, and the rest of his life is a starting example of what happens to those who refuse to admit their mistakes. The next time someone suggests that we are wrong, take an honest look at ourselves and choose God's way instead of Cain. So let's go through these parts right quick. How do we react when it comes down to us being corrected about what we say and what we do? How do we react? Do we react mad? Do we get ready to want to say the first thing that comes to mind? Do we wanna just flat cut somebody out and put them on blast and say, "I'm never wrong"? That's what a lot of us do at times. We either ready to cut somebody else, we ready to say, "Oh, I'm not wrong, you wrong. I don't need to correct nothing." How do we react to being corrected if we said or does something wrong? A lot of times, our flesh be ready to come out and rise up and want us to go off on that person and let them know that, "Oh, you wrong, I'm never wrong." So we're gonna get various reactions. But those who are humble enough to look at themselves and think about and look at the situation of, "Did I say something wrong? Did I do something wrong? Lord, throw your spotlight or heaven, from heaven upon me and let me see if I said or did something wrong." If we're not willing to look in the mirror ourselves to see the corrections that need to be made, we would never be able to see the true blessings of God. We would never see or be able to grow spiritually because of the fact that we're not willing to take a look in the mirror ourselves and see what we need to change in order for us to grow, in order for us to become better. With growth, first thing would come with growth, the note to knowledge in order for us to grow is when we make a mistake, when we did or said something wrong. We have to be willing to acknowledge something is said wrong, something is wrong. We can grow, we can learn, we can't go to another level if we can't even admit when we made a mistake. So here's what's going on this. After Cain's sacrifice was rejected, God gave him a chance to right his wrong and try again. God even encouraged him to do it, to do this. So if somebody's correcting, even if God looking at you saying, "Hmm, I think you might want to correct this and go about it this way," or just say, "Hey, you made a mistake and apologize and change the way how you go about the situation and how you think about the situation," rather than looking, cuz we have plenty of opportunities to correct something that we did or said something wrong. But we never taking advantage of the open opportunities to correct our mistakes. That's why this message says, "Our mistakes will make us great," because learning from our mistakes will make us a better person. But if we're not willing to learn from our mistakes, we're gonna constantly repeat them. We're gonna constantly repeat them, repeat them, repeat them, but wondering why we're not growing, no wondering why we're not being blessed, no wondering why we're losing out on stuff because of the times we don't wanna learn from our mistakes. And part of life's journey, part of this walk with God, part of living right, you gonna have to, we have to learn from our mistakes in order for us to become better. We have to learn from our mistakes in order for us to grow. A mistake doesn't mean you automatically fail, give up, no. It's saying, go back to the drawing board, learn what you did, what we did wrong, and go about it the right way the next go around, that's what it's saying. When God gives us an opportunity to correct something or presents a situation that we be able to correct something, we might as well take God on this, I say, "God, I might as well take this offer and correct, and get this corrected, and get this right, cuz I don't want nothing to hinder me from being blessed. I want nothing hinder me from growing." But if I'm too stuck up in my flesh and too stuck up in my pride or have so much pride that I'm not willing to admit and to be able to fast up and say that I need to, something, something about me I need to correct, that needs to be corrected by all means, go do it. But if you don't wanna do it and think you need to never do nothing wrong, you'd be surprised how much growth and how much stunt, how much of your blessings and your growth be stunned based upon our pride, based upon us reacting by our flesh and not doing it spiritually, not doing it by our spirits, not taking the time to look at ourselves and say, and think about the situation, seeing if we're right or wrong about it. God gave Cain an opportunity to correct his wrong, but Cain refused to do it. When we refuse to correct a wrong that we did, we miss out. Let me continue to the next part. But we, but Cain refused, and the rest of his life is startingly example of what happens to those who refuse to admit their mistakes. So like I was saying a moment ago, if we're refusing to acknowledge the offense, if we're refusing to acknowledge that we said or we done something wrong, if we're refusing to admit or tell that person that we flat out made a mistake on our jaws, on our, in our spiritual wall, or we said the wrong thing to the wrong person at the wrong time, guess what happens? Nothing will move in our life. Nothing. Cuz we're refusing to acknowledge the wrong. We're refusing to acknowledge that we said or done something wrong. We refuse to look at ourselves and say, "What did I do wrong for this person to react the way they're reacting towards me?" Genesis, chapter 16, verse 13, and it says, "And she called, called the name of the Lord that spake unto her, 'Thou God, sees me; for she said, "Have I also here looked after him that has seen me?'" We have to watch three people make serious mistakes. Sarah, who took marriage into her own hands and gave her servant to Abram. But this, hold on, let me, before I go into what's going on in the scripture, let me explain this. Let me tell you what's going on with this scripture comes upon, mine. This scripture is talking about when Sarah and Abram was trying to have a child. And rather than being patient and waiting on God and allowing God to do what he needs to do to fulfill a promise that he gave them, Sarah took things into her own hands. By one, giving her certain, but let me go into that part now. This is talking about the situation when Sarah, Abram took things into their own hands. Let me go into the, oh, what's going on, what's coming out of it. We have to watch three people make serious mistakes. One, Sarah, but she was Sarah I before she became Sarah, who took marriage into her own hands and gave her servant to Abram before he became Abraham. Two, Abram, who went along with the plan, but when the circumstances began to go wrong, refused to help resolve the problem. And three, Hagar. This is the woman that, this is the servant that she gave to her husband to have the child with. But I'm gonna go into them three scenarios right quick, let me finish it, and then I'm gonna, we gonna talk about that. Hagar, who ran away from the problem in spite of this messy situation, God demonstrated his ability to work in all things for good. Sarah, Abram still received the son they so desperately wanted, and God resolved Hagar's problems despite Abram's refusal to get involved. No problem is too complicated for God if we are willing to let him help us. So let's talk about this situation, let's talk about the three people that, the situation that came about. First, let's talk about Sarah, before she came, Sarah. She took it in her own marriage cuz her and Abram had tried for years to have a child, but could not have, but she could not bear no children. So she took marriage into her own hands rather than giving it to God, rather than letting God help them in the situation. She took the marriage to her own hands and gave her, one of her main servants, Hagar, to her husband Abram, and they had a child, which is named Ishmael. So rather than Sarah wait, just acknowledge and let God help her through this matter, she took it upon her own self, and that was her mistake. She didn't let God intervene, she didn't let God handle the situation. So we let our flesh get in the way. We let our own will get in our way. We wanted to do it our way, get in the way of what God wanted to do, the way God wants, wants it to happen, and not ours. Let's talk about the second person, Abram, before he came, Abraham. When he talking about, he went along with it. But when it came down to the situation, Abram refused, rather than, Abram went along with the plan. He the one who had the child with Hagar, that his name was Ishmael. So rather than him wanting, when the circumstances began to go wrong, refused to help resolve the problem, he refused to help resolve the issue. That's what's his mistake. Rather than trying to say, "Let's come with a solution to this dilemma. Let's try to come up with a solution to this problem. We take it upon ourselves to do it ourselves." And that's another mistake. We're taking situations into our own hands and trying to resolve it ourselves, rather than we give it to God. Think the word that God says, Cassius, in 1 Peter say, 5 and 7 says, "Cassius cares upon me because I care for you." Rather than us saying, "Oh, this is a problem, I need to give it to God and leave it in God's hands and never pick it back up." We often make mistakes and turn it back around and go pick it up, cuz God is not moving fast enough. He's not doing it the way we wanted to do. So we go back and go pick it up, and we try to handle it ourselves, just like what Sarah did, where Abram refused to handle, help resolve the issue. And let's talk about the third person, Hagar, the one who birthing, who carried and birthed Abraham's child, which he was Abram at that point, and named him Ishmael. Hagar, who ran away, ran away from the problem, despite what was going on, Hagar ran away from the issue that was at hand. Rather than being in the midst of it, the three of them needed to sit down and talk and talk to God about it to resolve their issue and resolve the difference and resolve what's going on, she ran away from the problem. Abraham refused to resolve the problem. Sarah took the problem into her own hands. See how we made mistakes about that? One, let's talk about Sarah's problem. Rather than Sarah taking it upon her own self to resolve the problem, she should've gave it to God. And should've left it with God. Two, when the problem came in the midst and it involved Abram, before he came Abraham, he should've, he should've been there in the midst of the problem, been there to resolve it and not refusing to put himself into the situation, which he still technically did, but he didn't wanna sit down and come up with a solution to the problem. And of course, Hagar, who ran away from the problem cuz she didn't wanna be part of the problem, which she already inserted herself to be in the problem cuz she had, gave birth to Ishmael when she had intimate sex with Abraham. Man. See, that was three mistakes made into it. And I never wanted them to acknowledge God in it. Oh, that's the most common thing with these three, with these three people in this problem. All three of them did not acknowledge God in this matter. And that will mess it up. That will cause a lot of calamity when we don't wanna sit down and, sit down and figure out and resolve the issue that's at hand, resolve the issue that needs to be handled and needs to be resolved. Rather than being a man and a woman of our word, being a man and a woman of God, we constantly wanna raise our problems rather than facing our problems. You can't conquer what you're not willing to face. So if there's a problem, that problem can be conquered unless we willing to face it. So we can't always think that it's hard for God to handle our issues. It's never hard for him. We just have to be, we have to just be willing or be invested to give our problems to God and let God handle it. It may not happen, it may not be flourished in the way that it needs to be done, the way we wanted it, but it's gonna get done right on time. It is human nature to hide our mistake, our sins, or overlook our mistakes, but it is hard to learn from a mistake if we don't acknowledge making it. And what is good, is it, what, what good is a mistake if we, if it doesn't teach us something? To learn from an error we make, we need to admit it, confess it, analyze it, and make adjustments so it doesn't happen again. Everybody makes mistakes, but only fools repeat them. But let's go through that, and that's coming from Proverbs, chapter 28, verse 13. Let's talk about the first part. It is human nature to hide our sins and overlook our mistakes. And that's, that's true. We often try to hide our mistakes, hide our sins, cover it up like we never done nothing wrong, when we're not trying to, we're not hiding nothing from God. We is literally not hiding anything from God. I'm just being honest. So it's human nature in our flesh to try to hide and cover up our sin. But it's hard to learn from a mistake if we don't acknowledge it. How do we go, how do we move on from it? How do we grow? How do we learn not to make mistake again if we don't even acknowledge it? If we don't acknowledge the mistake that we made, we're gonna forever repeat it. We're going to forever repeat it if we don't learn from it. Let's go to the next part. But here's a question for you. Have you learned from our mistake? Have there, have there been any mistakes in your lives that you actually learned from it? Or did we constantly repeat our mistakes? Are we actually repeating our mistakes right now? Or did we repeat it the day, yesterday, the day before? Have we learned from any of it, or are we still repeating? To learn from this, from an error that we made, we have to first admit it. So for us to go, go past it and for us to move on from it, first we have to learn from it. I learned that the, I had to learn to let God have his way and make sure I get the approval and notice it when it comes down to a relationship that could be a potential marriage. I learned that to judge the God about it, I learned from that to confess it. Yeah, we made mistakes along the way in any relationship, in any marriage. But are we learning from that mistake? Well, it took this point for me to learn from it. It took a point for me to learn from every mistake that I made. I had to confess it. I had to admit that I made a mistake. I just confessed it. Now I confess that I made a mistake. Now the next thing I needed to do is analyze it, what went wrong? Why didn't it work out the way it's supposed to work out? Why did this business, why did the relationship that is marriage didn't work out? Why didn't, it didn't work out? So now we taking time out to analyze, look at ourselves in the mirror, look at the situation saying, "Why did this not work out? There was something missing that this didn't work out the way it's supposed to work out." And now, next, last part we have to do is make adjustments. Meaning, we have to be willing to make the adjustments in our lives for we won't repeat the mistakes that we did. But if we don't, if we're not willing to adjust, adapt to the mistakes and adjust and adapt to the situation that happened, we're just gonna repeat what we just did and not actually take, take anything that we learned from it. That's showing that we needn't learn from it. But actually, a lot of times, a lot of times we can learn from it, but we don't wanna apply it. There's times in our lives that we could often learn from it, but don't apply what we learned. And that could be a costly mistake along the way in our lives in potential relationships, marriages, and running our own businesses and everything else. It could be a potential hindrance because, yeah, I learned from it, but why I'm not applying it? Why are we not applying what we have learned? A part of growth is learning from our past. That's why I often tell people, the only thing you should ever bring from your past into your present is the lessons that you learned. Don't bring the past itself, but bring the lessons that comes with it. Just like, for example, is there an example? Don't let go of your hand. And this is a while back. I learned not to move somebody in my, my space unless I have intentions of marrying them. Is there an example? Watch it. So that mean, what you mean by that, Minister Eric? It means, don't bring certain people into your space that you're not really ready to have in your personal space. And another way of saying, don't bring people, don't bring the same type of people that hurt you or did you wrong into your personal space. Don't be around the same people that hurted you. You may need to speak of blessing and be an encouragement to them, yes. But far as bringing them into your personal space, as in what you do, things that you have going on personally in your life, have to learn not to bring them into that personal space. That's why I learned, there's only but so much I'm, I allow people to know about me. Because a lot, I learned that because one time I went, I did it, my business was out on Facebook. My business was out on Facebook. This person took the time out and posted the, the issues that me and this person had right on Facebook. So I learned that to keep certain people around in my personal space. Or keep them, I kept them out of distance because don't nothing that goes on in my life need to be posted on social media. I post the positive things, yeah, but far as my personal issues, I would not post them type of stuff on Facebook. But let's continue. I'ma let God have his way. Truly letting God have his way. Exactly. Aaron asked that the sin he and Miriam committed not be held against them. It is, ooh, the devil don't want me to pl- teach this. Ooh, the devil is a liar. Get your butt back on, there we go. The devil don't want me to teach this. He just tried to knock the signal off, y'all. I'm gonna read it again. Aaron asked that his si- uh, Aaron asked that the sin he and Miriam committed not be held against them. It is easy to look back at our mistakes and recognize that they're foolishness. It is much harder to recognize foolish plans while we are carrying them out because somehow then they seem appropriate. To get rid of foolish ideas before they turn into foolish actions requires eliminating our wrong thoughts and mo- and motives. Failing to do this caused Aaron and Miriam, uh-uh, Miriam much grief. I'm taking that off. I'm taking that off because that's nothing but the devil. That's nothing but the devil. So pretty much what this is talking about right here in the scripture coming out of Numbers, chapter twelve, verse eleven. That's dealing with Aaron and Miriam when they committed their sin. But, and they wanted it not to be held against them. But at the end of the day, a lot of times the only people that's gonna hold a whole lot of stuff against us is the people of our, in the past, is the people that we gave up to live a better life, to gave up because of the fact that we decided to walk this walk with God. The mistake is to go back to the same type of people that didn't wanna live for God in the first place. That would be the mistake. If we choosing to give up the certain things about our life that we so used to lo- we should do so much to please our flesh. That is, was displeasing to our spirit, but we begin to realize it's time to please our spirit and to do what's right spiritually and not do what pleases the world. The last, last thing we don't wanna do is go back, is go back to doing what we was doing in the world. Last part, last part. Last part, ladies and gentlemen. Moses recorded the Israelites' journey as God is strutting him, providing a record of their spiritual as well as the geometric progress. Have we made spiritual progress lately? Recording our thoughts about God and lessons we've learned over a period of time can, can be a valuable and spiritual growth. A record of our spiritual pilgrimage will let us check up on our progress and avoid repeating past mistakes. Numbers, chapter thirty-three, verse two, ladies and gentlemen. That's where that's coming from. So what it's saying is that, have we ever took, ooh. Anywho, have we ever took time out to record any of the mistakes that we made in our lives? Any of the past mistakes that we made in our past and not only just writing them down, are we actually learning from them? Are we not only just learning from them, are we actually applying what we learned? I'm asking that question. Are we applying what we learned? Ooh, this is good. Anywho, let's continue. Are we literally applying what we have learned from our past mistakes? Are we applying, are we applying them? Have we learned from them? Or are we going around that same mountain over and over again? Are we wandering around in the desert trying to figure out? While we're wandering around, rather than I will be wandering around if I didn't take time out to actually learn from the mistake. But let's continue. Let us continue. Oh, Jesus help me. Here we go. Rather than admit his mistakes and seek forgiveness and recalcitration. Her nuns sent an enormous amount of money to cover up his error. His cover up cost him dearly. It often causes more to cover up an error than to admit it honestly. Rather than compound an error through defensiveness, seek forgiveness and recalcitration as, as we recognize our mistake. We will save ourselves and others a lot of pain and trouble. First Chronicles, chapter nineteen, verse six. Pretty much I would wrap it up with that. So have we ever got to a point that we thinking as we even watching the news and watch around the world, wherever we watch. Have you ever noticed that a lot of people with a lot of money have tendencies to spend a lot of money to cover up a mistake? Cover up their dirty dirt, their dirty deeds and they can got, they won't come out to resurface on them? They saying, I pay you this much money if you cover up this dirty deed that I did. Example, don't let it go to that. Example, I pay you three, three million dollars. You cover up this, cover up this sin that I molested and I raped women. Is example, don't let it go to your head. We have a lot of that going on and people are often portraying themselves like they all this and that, like they, they have no blemishes. And have no, have not done anything wrong, but they paying all these other people to cover up for their wrongdoing. They're rather than honestly coming out and admit, oh, I made a mistake. Please forgive me. You're hurting a lot of people. We hurt a lot of people when we have tendencies to cover things up and not be willing to all honestly be opening and honestly confess it. Cause it's like we doing whatever we take to cover up our wrongdoing, to cover up our dirty deeds. And thinking they're not gonna resurface. It may not resurface on the wor- in the world, but it sure resurfacing God and God still remembers it. Especially if we have not asked for forgiveness of our sin. God is gonna say, hey, I remember you did this and you didn't ask for forgiveness of it, so bam, gotta go, bye-bye. And that is something that goes on around in the world. You know, a lot of these rich people is paying, especially these male rich, um, people are paying a lot of money to cover up their wrong, their mistakes. To make it look like they didn't make the mistake, but they did. And a lot of people that they did wrong to are suffering because these people don't wanna even confess that they made a mistake. I'm not, you hurting them, but you hurting yourselves more by not, by doing, going about the way they going about. But it seem like they don't even wanna learn from that mistake, so it's gonna cost them down the line. It's gonna really literally cost them down the line a seat in heaven. So they rather go in hell and they rather burn in the devil's hell to be, to co- keep a mistake a secret and burn in hell than to confess their wrongs and these get a chance to rejoice in heaven? Apparently not. They don't wanna do that. So as I wrap this up. My encouragement, um, message in the ending of it, please, ladies and gentlemen, please. Acknowledge that you did something wrong. Acknowledge if you said or done anything wrong to someone. Acknowledge it. That means a way of admit it, confess it, analyze and to make adjustments. Cause we would never be able to grow. We would never have a real relationship with God. We would never be able to spiritually grow the way we supposed to grow. If we're holding on and we trying to keep thinking we're keeping these secrets, these mistakes in rap and thinking, nobody don't know, but God knows. The only thing you should ever bring from your past is the lessons that you learned. And for you, for it to show that you learned from our, from the mistakes, it's you, uh, shortly, people seeing that we applying what we learn. If we refuse to apply what we learn, then we will never grow. If we refuse to make, to confess a mistake, we'll never get over it. We'll constantly repeat our mistakes over and over again. So learn from your mistakes, apply them to your now and moving forward. All the trials and tribulations that we go through is to prepare us for the future. It may don't seem like it's preparing us for the now and what's going on now, but it, they always preparing us for the future. Well, that was the message for tonight. This is your one and only Facebook minister, Minister Eric Robinson Jr. I know Friday we are gonna be doing a speak your mind moment. If not, it would be a Bible study session, but I let God have his way. I thank y'all for tuning in tonight. I thank y'all for the hearts, likes, shares, invites in. Um, I do appreciate it. You taking time out of your busy schedules just to listen to hear an encouraging word. And I always wrap my sessions saying, I love y'all. I appreciate y'all. I thank y'all for tuning in. Y'all have a God bless morning, afternoon, evening and night. God bless y'all. I love y'all. Peace.